We call this regularly scheduled meeting of Town Council to order. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Hearing none, we will declare the agenda is approved and go right down to announcements. Any announcements for members of council? I always look to Councilor Thorburn first because I know there's got to be something.
I've always had one or two, but only one tonight. Actually, on behalf of the Mayor and Council, I went to Lunenburg yesterday to the vet units and congratulated Oscar Armberg for his 100th birthday. Cake and good-sized group there. He was a resident in Star Street and lived here in his home until he was 99, went in last year in the vet unit in Lunenburg. And as president of the Legion, I also at that time thanked him for his service to his country. It was a great day for Oscar and I was honored to be there. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Councilor Thorburn, for doing that. Other announcements? I'll give the announcement that on July 18th, we will be hosting the, we'll be participating in the pride flag raising ceremony that will be down at Shipyards Landing again. It was a, the last number of years has been a larger and larger turnout and we are pleased to be part of that event and support those who participated in it and organize it and thank them for giving their time to do that. If there's nothing else for those announcements, I'll just say thank you to members of council and staff who attended the announcement from Akoa and the Promise of Nova Scotia today for $810,000 for the realignment of the business park and for the design stage. And so we look forward to that moving along. If there's nothing else, I don't see, is there any delegations? So hard to see with all the people. If anyone raised their hand? No? We have the minutes from June 24th. Was that your birthday, June 24th? No. It's this week? What day?
It stopped eight years ago.
Any errors or omissions for the minutes? Hearing none, we'll declare the minutes approved and go all the way down to reports and recommendations, Smart Cities Challenge update from July 2019. And we have our sustainability planner Leon DeVried here to go over that.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. So you have before you a staff report prepared by myself, providing you with an update on a number of fronts related to our Smart Cities Challenge win, which of course was announced on May 14th, a date that will forever be infamous. And probably the main driver of this report here is that the negotiation process on the funding agreement with Infrastructure Canada is going to be proceeding a lot quicker than staff anticipated. We actually had a kind of an off-the-record comment from staff at Infrastructure Canada that Bridgewater is almost undoubtedly going to be the first community out the gate with its Smart Cities funding, and they attributed that to our high level of organization.
Congratulations.
That's nice to hear. So we're going to be having a series of meetings with Infrastructure Canada over the summer to negotiate the five-year agreement, five-year contribution agreement for the $5 million. Starting the implementation of the program ahead of schedule has quite a few benefits for us, including that we'll be able to deliver results to the community quicker. Some of the items that we think would have the highest value of pulling into the current fiscal year include getting a head start on hiring some of the project staff that were contemplated as part of the proposal, hiring some of the project consultants that we'll be needing to work with in order to build our expertise, particularly with regard to information technology systems and energy studies, and a couple of other valuable items that are described in the staff report. Beyond that, we are continuing to receive interest from vendors and potential partners in our program. They're coming from local, regional, and national, which is great. So we're cataloging all of those inquiries that are already coming in and certainly encourage council that if you do run into anyone or any firm that wants to work with the town, you simply direct them to our team so that we can do a take-in for their information or intake, I should say, and make sure that they're filed appropriately. Also wanted to point out that we will be, the theme of the town's entry into the South Shore Exhibition Parade will be our Smart Cities Win. We have a number of partners that will be joining us, so we'll have a little procession in the parade, all with the theme of smart cities and the value for our community. So that's being planned right now. And a couple of other things that are happening as part of that is that Infrastructure Canada will be sending their staff team here during Exhibition Week. So we have a couple of events that we're pulling together. They have expressed an interest in meeting members of council, meeting some of our community partners. So a draft schedule has been circulated to council. They'll also be bringing the Assistant Deputy Minister of Infrastructure Canada, Gerard Peets, will be coming to Bridgewater for about 24 hours. So we'll be giving him a tour of the community and also introducing him to our partners. So I look forward to those events unfolding. I won't mention too much more. In the staff report, we have an update from, we've been doing presentations in the community and in the region about our program. There's a small update there on the Nova Scotia Power Smart Meter Program, moving forward a little quicker than anticipated, some analysis with regard to our proposal to move forward with project funding sooner, and a number of communications. This story has obviously been picked up by the media in quite a number of locations and information continues to go out to the community and that will only increase as time goes on. So the main FYI item for council is that there will be some future staff reports coming to you with recommendations for increased, an increase to the budget for this year so that we can make room for the Smart Cities grant to start being spent this year. That would of course be an in and an out from towns, the towns' perspective, so no net increase in budget. And also you're making sure that you're comfortable with the project plan.
Okay. Ask questions from members of council. To the mayor. Leon, what are we looking for additional office space? What are the needs there? Like how many people are you intending to fill that space with?
Yeah, thank you. So our exact needs are not known yet, but the Smart Cities program is going to bring somewhere between five and seven additional staff on. So we have, for example, a project, a dedicated project manager, an IT specialist, technical staff, so engineers slash trades, sorry, energy technicians, and possibly also combining that with the existing staff team so that we're all in one place. Town hall is at or exceeding capacity right now, so yeah.
So they're looking at external, you're looking at external locations?
Yeah.
Councilor Donald.
Can any of that type of work be done in a shared workspace like CO3? Co3? CO3?
Co3.
Just because the interactions with other community members and potentially some local businesses that we're not aware of might emerge from being in a space like that, though I understand that you kind of need to be together and working together. If there's bits and pieces that can be done there that might, it might enhance the project and work?
Possibly. We would be pleased to look into that. Yeah. We do also need a place where the public can come.
Right.
Hence the need for a location.
Right.
Yeah. We can look into that.
Are you talking sofa as a location?
I think so. Yeah.
So something like the MJSB building for IT?
That's one of the buildings that we're looking at. Yeah, we've got, we've got eight or nine locations in town that we're examining for potential for the project.
Okay, great.
Yeah, we'll make sure to coordinate with our CAO on any contracts in the space.
Councilor Thorburn.
Just one easy question. It looks like we was planning to start next year, but because everything's being pushed forward, it's going to be a lot of work. Are you ready for it?
With some additional money, we can be ready for it.
No, but I mean, the anticipated start date was farther open and moved it back.
Yeah. No, it's actually a significant benefit to start sooner. There were actually a few, there's a few items in the proposal that are a little crunched in years one and two, and if we can stretch that out to be, you know, one and a half or two and a half years, it would be beneficial. I think we can handle it.
Other questions from members of council? I think Leon will look forward to future updates as we start ramping up and going. Great, thank you. Next item is delegation of authority to award tender for town hall siding. We have a bit of a leaky building.
So the description of the work was something that council considered during budget deliberations, and we included $50,000 within the capital budget for 2019-20 for the town hall siding project. The procurement policy for the town requires that that level of value for a capital project be tendered, anything over $25,000, and it also requires that tenders of that value be awarded by council. That being said, there is a clause within your procurement policy that does enable council to delegate that to the CAO. Staff have prepared the tender, they've issued the tender, it closes July 18th. Given the meeting schedule, there's some concern by staff that if we go to the August 12th, it will delay work, and there's concern about getting it done during, during the season that we want to get that work done. Therefore, what's being recommended is that council consider the delegation of the authority to award that particular tender to myself, the CAO, under the condition that the award is to the lowest compliant bidder. So if, if for some reason the recommendation is not to award to the lowest compliant bidder, that would come back to council for consideration. Otherwise, it would be businesses usual because it would be the lowest compliant bidder and would be awarded. So that is the recommendation that's being put forth for council's consideration.
Straightforward. Someone prepared to make a motion? Councilor Fager?
Yes, worship. That Town Council for the town of Bridgewater pursuant to section 10, 10.3 of Policy 79, purchasing and tender policy authorized the chief administrative officer to award the tender for the town hall siding to the lowest compliant bidder.
Perfect, thank you. Seconded by Councilor Donalds for a story there. Any discussion? Mr. Graves?
So in the past, we thought that the windows would correct the leak and it didn't work. Is deciding, is this going to be the end of it? Because they've been leaking for not a long time. Oh, look who's here.
We hope it will. We've tried many things. We've re-flashed, we've changed windows, we continue, we think we get it each time and then we get a storm from a different direction and it starts leaking again. So we, it's coming through the brick someplace. We're not sure exactly where, so the thought is that if we seal the brick with the siding, then that should stop it. Should.
Should. Should stop it. Okay. Do we know?
We have, we keep trying new things and that's all we can do. It's been leaking for 20 years, so, or more. So we, we keep trying different things. That's, that's all we can do and we've tried everything else, so I think this is down to the last thing that we can, we can try, so.
Do we know what color the siding is going to be?
Whatever you want.
I haven't picked it up yet.
All right. Who has? Who has good taste? It's not going to be something weird, right?
No.
I know the CAO's favorite color is like bright something. Okay. We've got to move right to secondary. Questions being called, all those in favor? Those opposed, motions carried, thank you. RFP 2019-04, town hall heat pump modifications. Talk about things that also have been working. Mr. Hawkins?
Thank you. On June, I picked a great night. June 3rd, staff issued RFP 2019-04, town hall heat pump modifications, phase one, with a closing date of June 20th, 2019. The RFP was advertised on the town's website as well as provincial procurement website. Thirteen RFP packages were issued, of which three submissions came back. All submissions came from qualified contractors. The approved budget for the project is $35,000. Staff reviewed and scored all submissions as per the RFP document. The lowest bidder, Rhino's Limited, was the, was within the project budget with a price of $27,346.92 net HST. Staff recommend the council award RFP 2019-04 to Rhino's Limited for the modifications of the town hall heat pumps on level four only for a total price of $27,346.92 net HST.
Questions from members of council? Councilor Graves?
So for this one, what's the original budget going back a few years and how much have we spent? Because it hasn't really worked as designed, has it?
We've had some issues with the system.
Yeah.
We've had some compressor issues that hopefully are fixed. So the second or third time now, we've installed windows, we've tried to do some things to help out. Fourth floor is the, is our biggest issue and more in the shoulder season than either the winter or the summertime, but yeah. So what we're trying to do now is we're separating some of the system, the units off the main system, and so they will be able to switch back and forth between heating and cooling without the whole building being either in heating or cooling. So we looked at it initially when we did the project and were deterred from it by our contractors, so we're wishing now that we, we actually did do it, but so now it's, it's hard to do. So now we have to kind of do it a piece at a time, so.
So on the fourth floor, each units, each office is going to get their own unit?
Just what they have right now.
So then, so if the sun's on one side, one side's going to be hotter, the other side's going to be cooler, does that mean they have to keep their doors closed all the time? Because their rooms are small anyways, right?
Yeah, so, so the units that they have currently are the same ones that they're going to have, where they're, it's being, they're being, so the fourth floor, including the office spaces and the meeting room up there, are going to be put on a new unit and it has a mixing box system. So then it allows each, so Sandra could be on heating, Monty can be on cooling. Currently, the system doesn't allow us to do that.
But do the doors have to be closed?
No.
Like for transit?
No, it doesn't.
So it's really a small, okay?
Our issue is that, that when they're at a comfortable temperature on the third floor, that we're at 90 degrees.
Yeah.
And if we switch ours to cooling, then they freeze downstairs.
Okay.
It's just, so we, the windows did help. We have, we finally have windows that we can open. So in the shoulder season, that's great because we can get some cooler air, but.
And when we renovated the fourth floor, we insulated it really well for energy efficiency. But now it's, it's a big oven in there unfortunately, so.
So the last one is, in regards to the third floor, there's, you can do something for nine grand?
So one of the options in our tender, which we're not proposing right now is, we could do the fourth floor and the tower of the third floor, or the part of the third floor, but it was going to be $9,000 more than what our budget. We are hoping we could do both within our budget, but unfortunately we cannot. So, so we could, we have the option to go over budget by $9,000 and do the fourth floor and part of the third floor.
So the third floor is direct department side?
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, or we just do the fourth floor, see how it works out, and then next year, try to do another piece.
So just possible. So the third floor, the rec side, would that be, could, could it not be $18,000 next year or $20,000?
It, it could be more money, but everything goes up every year, so whether it takes a big jump or not, I don't see.
But do you mean in terms of having crews come, is it cheaper to have the crews do it all at once versus having them come back?
Just do it now.
That's what I was wondering.
You're already there.
Or is it, is it a separate project altogether anyway?
It is a separate project, but I mean, once you hear your, fortunately that the contractor who is below bidder this time is a local contractor and was far cheaper than the other two contractors. So, so I'm hoping that next year or, you know, that we can do the, the third floor, perhaps the whole third, so make the third floor a bigger project instead of just a small portion. We could do the whole third floor and separate it out. So then it would be just as big a job again, so. So other than, you know, inflation, I don't see any reason why we'd go up in price, more so than that.
Councilor Thorburn.
When I read that document, I think it was 47,000 dollars we had approved for the budget. This part's only 27, so the third floor wasn't $9,000, but it cost, you'd be over budget by $9,000 to do it. I'm in Michael's camp. If, if we can get it done this year and save money on to it, even though it's $9,000 more, it may be money well spent. Then next year we get a big price increase and it's 15,000 or 16,000 dollars because we're doing the work anyway. So I'm, I can go either way. I just want to do what we can and be over budget by $9,000, but I'm concerned.
My concern with, with doing both now is what if what we propose for the fourth floor doesn't work? Then it doesn't work for the fourth floor or the third floor. We're batting zero right now with these heat pumps. So I, if, if it's a, if it's a standalone project, whether we do the fourth floor or not, and it's not double the price to have someone come in, then I'd rather kind of baby steps through this to make sure this one works. But I understand what you're saying. If it was going to cost 20 grand because it's a retooling of everything and have them come in, then that would be a different story. But it sounds, from Mr. Hawkins, like it's, the only cost difference would be if there's a little bit of a increase in the materials next year or a little bit of labor. It's not a whole new, you know, work or.
Can we get that in writing? It's just a few pennies. No, I understand very, and I'll support that way, but it seems, you know, you're going to do it, you got to do it, so.
Any further discussion? Someone prepared to make a motion? Councilor Thorburn?
I move that Town Council for the town of Bridgewater, award RFP 2019-04, town hall heat pump modifications, phase one to Rhino's for the modification of the town hall heat pumps for level four only, as proposed in their RFP submission for a total price of $30,156.45, including HST, $27,346.92 net HST.
Thank you. Seconded by Councilor McDonalds. We've had a good discussion. Ready for a question? Questions? Make calls, those in favor, those opposed? Motion is carried. Next item, Lunenburg County Multipurpose Center Corporation Board, use of surplus.
I'll give you a little background. So council, remember, we went out to a proposal call for a transition coordinator and interim management for the Lunenburg County Lifestyle Center. The proposal closed in May and we had two components of the board review, have established a committee, reviewed the proposals, and the board has made a decision with respects to the award of the proposal. The board passed the motion to award the proposal to Newstadia Recreation to provide the interim operations and management of the facility to a maximum cost of $190,000 plus HST. However, to do that, it's pending the approval of the two minutes of the units. The budget for the interim management and transition coordinator was $130,000. We're anticipating a grant of $15,000, so that brings it to 145 in terms of funds that the board has to fund this interim management and transition coordinator piece. So we're short by 45,000. The surplus from the 2018-19 budget is anticipated to be 45,000. Normally that goes back to the units because that's the way the agreement's written, but the councils can deviate from that by passing a motion to enable the surplus to remain with, with the board. So the board has recommended, and that's why you have the motion in front of you, that the surplus of 44,000, and that's, the auditors have been in, that's the number that they've, they're pretty sure it's going to be, that that surplus would remain with the board to fund the interim operations and management of the Lunenburg County Lifestyle Center using Newstadia Recreation.
Just maybe quickly, Deputy Mayor Tanner, can you remember a couple of the other facilities at Newstadia? Is the management firm for?
BMO Center in Halifax, Bedford.
Dartmouth Fort Pad?
World Bank Center in Dartmouth, yeah, Dartmouth Fort Pad.
I just think that's good information for the public.
Yeah. If you're in Ontario, obviously.
Yeah. This is what this company does. Yes, Councilor Graves?
So just in regards to Newstadia, I went through the facilities. They have, I think, 13 or 14. Not one of them is a pool. Not one of them, they don't, they've never managed a pool, although they may have done PICTO, as I understand it.
PICTO, yeah.
But it was run by the YMCA, but they're not doing it now. There's tons of experience, at least I think there's tons of experience in Lunenburg County and Nova Scotia, how to run a rink, you mean running rinks, the town of Bridgewater for 50, 60 years. But the, but the pool has a different dynamic because everything's connected, as I understand it, everything's connected to the humidity from the pool and like the whole system is kind of, the pool is, is the determining factor and not necessarily the rink, as I understand it, or how's it, how it's being explained to me. So I guess the question is, how much confidence does the board have in hiring a company that's never managed the pool is the question? Because they've got rinks and they're very good at rinks. They've got 37 rinks that they manage and they've got fields, so these are outdoor fields and fields that are covered at a certain point during the wintertime, and then they've got gymnasiums, a few of those, and then they have exercise rooms. So, but they're all kind of similar, but a pool is something that's really truly unique.
Well, I was just saying, in terms of the mechanical equipment, the systems and how that operation functions within the facility, they've gone on the tour, they've looked at that, they have a lot of confidence in the staff that are in place in terms of their understanding of those systems and how that, how it's integrated into the remainder of the facility. The board didn't, and the review committee didn't raise any concerns with respects their ability to program. So that includes the aquatic center. So they, what they'd be doing is, we're already programming space in there, they would be looking at best practices and seeing if there's modifications that we could make, as well as looking at our operating structure to see if there's, you know, how efficient we are at that and is there improvements to be made. So that's part of their contract is that. They would lean on their pool of resources as well through their peers when it comes to looking at the aquatic center.
Okay. As I say, I just want to clarify.
That's a good question.
For me, as a, as a board member, I just, I saw them as a company that runs facilities and that's their sole purpose is to run facilities. And I believe we need to try something different and hopefully they can kind of find some efficiencies for us and get us on the right path and then we'll figure out what to do after their contract is up and take it from there. But your point is well taken.
You know, the pool's a feature. It's an important feature of the community and a lot of people use it and the fear would be that they would use the pool to save money by, do you know what I mean?
Yeah, the board is still very much in, in control.
Yeah.
And the board very much lives in Lunenburg County and, so I have confidence that the three of us sitting around the table representing the residents of the town of Bridgewater aren't going to take drastic measures to save a buck if it's going to mean that people can't have access to recreation services. So, and I think you see that shift now, certainly when we're putting on concerts and other events, we're recognizing that there's a little bit more to it than just how much profit can you make, right? There's a value to getting people out swimming or skating or out going up to dinner before they go and see a Tanya Tucker concert or something like that. So there is a bit of a shift and we just have to kind of remind, we may have to remind Newstadia of that, but we're aware of that, but that's a good question.
The motion?
Yes, please.
I move the Town Council for the town of Bridgewater approve the use of the estimated $45,000 surplus from the 2018-19 Lunenburg County Multipurpose Center Corporation budget to engage the services of Newstadia Recreation to provide an operations review and interim management of the LCLC until March 2020, contingent on approval from the municipality of the District of Lunenburg.
Thank you. Can I have a secondary, please, Deputy Mayor Tanner? Further discussion?
Yeah, the only comment, these people have an extensive experience in the overall management of this type of facility. It may not include a pool, but it's, you know, managing a pool cannot be much different than managing even an arena.
Well, that's, I totally disagree. Pools are extremely complex.
Not the management of them. Let's, we'll argue with that later on. But having said that, that they do have an extensive resume on managing these types of facilities. But having said that, that they do have an extensive resume on, on managing these types of facilities and.
Yeah, I should just point out, they're not coming in and replacing all our staff. Right? Our staff are in place, so we still have our operators, we still have our aquatic manager, we still have those people in place. So it's, it's not like we're hiring Newstadia, laying off a bunch of people and, and having some kind of turnover, right? Their job is to come in and look at the overall operation of the facility and tell us where we need to go and what changes we need to make. But when they start, it's not, in comes Newstadia, out goes, out goes the staff. Okay, so that wasn't clear.
I was just wondering, in the contract, what are the requirements for updating the board? Like, will they be updating monthly, every two months?
They would be, just like, just like we had the general manager and like Trudy's doing right now. They report with the, through the CEOs to the board. And so monthly there's the financial reports, there's the operation reports. They look at rates, those types of things. Those are all things that would be discussed at the board table, just as it is now.
On a regular basis?
Yeah, okay.
Good question. Any further discussion? Questions? Questions have been called. All those in favor, those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. Item nine point five is the Lumber County Senior Safety Program June twenty nineteen report in there. Sound like a broken record when I say it's just, it's quite something to look at the numbers and realize how many people require this service month after month after month. Councilor Graves.
If you were to double the number of senior safety coordinators, even triple, there'd still be seniors that need help.
Yeah.
It's not big of a, of a problem.
So I would encourage the public when this is posted online to go in and read those numbers and see for yourself and maybe there's an opportunity to help out.
So they, just questions, if we feel that we have adequate staff to support the needs now, or is it?
No, I, I think we're, we're probably a long way off from that, but it's, it's matching the resources.
To fund, funding.
Financial resources.
Yes.
For sure. Councilor McDonald.
Michael, are there things that, that members of the community or business can do to, to help promote and support them?
Is there? Yeah, I'm, yeah, I'm sure there are things, absolutely. Yeah.
Yeah, because I, I just know, in my profession, I have worked with the senior safety coordinator, and my job would have been much more complicated without, and so I've encouraged us to, to find out what we can do to support them. So if there's other organizations that are supported by them, it's, it's definitely worth reaching out to Cosecom.
Perfect, thank you. Councilor Thorburn.
I think I mentioned before, but the Legion has a group of volunteers together to do income tax for those seniors. If, if that message gets out to them, and we do them when requested, if somebody has a problem now and needs something done, we have a team in place that will assist them, so.
I think you did eight hundred, didn't you?
Yeah.
That's amazing. That's amazing.
Excellent, good, thank you. Our next item is twenty nineteen, twenty twenty parking budgets.
So this item. Normally can't hear me. So this item, something, a question arose at budget time this year about whether parking was full cost recovery. So this report just shows, you know, the expenses and the revenues are kind of distributed among a number of departments. So we kind of added them all up and looked at the bottom line. And as you can see, these are just operating costs, not full cost recovery, but it should be kept in mind. I've got a couple of notes at the bottom that the bylaw enforcement officer does more than just bylaws. And that the town hall parking lot, the maintenance is in there, but a lot of that is used for staff parking, so it's really a town cost. So certainly this was just for information requested by council, so if there are any questions or any areas to be followed up further.
Deputy Mayor. You might not know this, Don, I guess, but do, what percentage of the bylaw council's time is used for parking? Fifty percent, twenty-five percent?
I, I don't know the answer to that, but it's something I could ask Scott.
Well, I think it'd just help us understand the numbers a bit more clear, obviously because we're not allocating it full.
Scott did mention that he, he didn't feel that he would spend the whole budget on that this year. But I, I didn't put it in the report because we don't know where the revenues are going to land either. You know, we may not spend as much, but we may not get as much revenue either, so.
Yeah, fair enough.
Yeah, it's early in the game to kind of make those kind of predictions, but I can certainly ask Scott about the percentage.
Councilor Thorburn.
Answer to Deputy Mayor's question. At our board meeting, police commission, that officer is going to be doing patrol two days a week and parking meter, so it'll be fifty-fifty for the next six or eight months.
And they do some dog control as well.
There's other bylaws, yes, Councilor Graves.
So is the number going to, is the number going to come to more neutral cost? Because the idea was it's supposed to be cost neutral, the parking, revenue meet the expense.
Well, first of all, there's no capital in here, so, you know, certainly that takes it out of the, if you start adding capital in, it takes it out of the cost recovery range. But it's hard to say where the, we haven't really had a full, good year with the parking revenue. So it'll really depend on what the revenue does.
I think it's also when I read this, because a lot of the comments I get are that you're paying for a bylaw officer, and if you didn't have to pay for the bylaw officer, then you wouldn't need to charge for parking. But when you look at that, that's not accurate. So the parking meter revenue is, you know, fourteen thousand dollars more than the cost of the bylaw enforcement officer that's been allocated to parking. So it's not a factual statement to say the bylaw enforcement officer, if you got rid of that bylaw enforcement officer, you wouldn't have to pay for parking. We still have expenses to deal with parking. But the, the meter revenue alone, just for the meter, it's not, the permits, not the other things, if you look at that, it does cover that bylaw enforcement officer. So just bringing that up because that is, that is something I hear quite a bit. If you got rid of one, it would solve the other problem. We still have a whole bunch of, and that doesn't even take into account people parking in front of their business all day, and things like that. Any other questions to the Georgia Finance for that? Okay, thank you. Uh, next item is RFP twenty nineteen dash zero five, supply of one new professional series rigid inflatable boat.
Long title, isn't it?
It is a long title.
Staff issued RFP two thousand nineteen dash zero five, supply of new professional series rigid inflatable rescue boat on June fifth with a closing date of June twentieth. The RFP was advertised on the town's website and the provincial procurement website. Twelve RFP packages were issued and we received three back. The approved capital budget is forty-eight thousand dollars. However, the fire department's contributing twenty thousand dollars, and the police department is contributing an additional five thousand dollars totaling a budget of seventy-three thousand dollars. Staff recommend that council award RFP two thousand nineteen dash zero fo- four, sorry, zero, zero five, including additional funds from the fire department and police department to New Star Marine and Scooter, Inc. For the supply of a new professional series rigid inflatable rescue boat, including options for a total price of seventy-one thousand, three dollars and twelve cents net HST.
Discussion.
Beautiful boat, nice boat.
Councilor Thorburn.
Well, the boat that we have there now was actually bought from Wensland Engineering back in two thousand eight, two thousand nine for five thousand dollars, which the fire department bought, like they normally do, and turned it over to the town. Since that time, we've bought a new trailer and a fifty horsepower motor for that, which unfortunately are not suitable for the new boat. So if we purchase a boat with the money invested, we're still coming in on budget. Plus you'll have a, a motor, a boat, and a trailer that's worth, has some value that can be sold at a later date. So I think it's a good deal.
Deputy Mayor Tanner. Seems like a lot of boat for territory in the town that is stretches from just past Shipyard's Landing. Probably this size boat would only perhaps go up to the new bridge. It probably wouldn't be able to go much further.
That's not true.
Okay.
That boat's required, it goes inland to lakes, it goes down to La Havre, it goes different places.
So it goes outside the town of Bridgewater?
Right, and it had to trail in a lot of, it just doesn't put it in here and drive down. We've already trailed it down to La Havre when the boat was offshore.
So are, there's no other contributions from outside fire departments or any of this?
No, actually, and there's, there's an agreement between Northfield, Bridgewater, and Dayspring. If we get a call, we've got a heavier boat, Northfield has a small one that's used for inland lakes, and you have Dayspring. We all respond for backup, and we've been doing that for years, so. We have them in town as much as we go out of town, so it's a, it's a nice agreement, and it works for all three departments, and it certainly gets the job done. I mean, it can be a matter of opinion if you think it's too big a boat, but it certainly is not for the job that it does. And emergencies, it runs it. It's, it's, it's just replacing what you had now, and for the firefighter's safety, that's the way to go.
Yeah.
So further to Deputy Mayor's point, the, the territory that is in town, that is water, is much less than the territory that's out of town that the boat needs. I'm not disputing that the boat needs to respond, mutual aid, all those things. But to me, shouldn't we have the smaller boat and the other communities have the bigger boat? Like, do you know what I mean? Like, if we, if we have something in distress that's between the two bridges, you drop that boat at Shipyard's Landing and you don't need massive horsepower to get up there. Versus if you're down in Dayspring and the boat is a couple of miles down river, yeah, you need to get to that a lot quicker because the territory is, is larger. Should, should it not almost be, did you say that one of them, one of them has a smaller boat for inland lakes? Like, shouldn't we have the smaller boat and they have the bigger?
Well, unfortunately, when it was set up, we had the bigger boat, and then they supplement what we had. So if we were downsized to a smaller boat, somebody's going to have to get a bigger boat.
Well, I guess that's my, yeah.
Because it's, the way the process is now, that's been working since two thousand and eight, has worked well. So we're just replacing what they had and what we have, and they would replace what they had when it comes up, I would think. Say that I agree with a hundred percent, but that's the way it is.
I guess the difference is in two thousand eight, that boat was five thousand dollars, right? And now we're seventy.
Well, actually, it's fifty because the, the fire department's putting twenty thousand of their own money into it.
But they're taking that from stuff they were going to use for other projects.
Well, they must have found they had the money for it, or they wouldn't have taken it with the project.
Fund raised for that. Just, it seems like a, I'm not a boat expert. I was gonna say, I'm not an engineer. I'm also not an engineer. I just, I can't, I can't help but notice how much water is in, in our, in our town that requires a boat. And I feel that it seems to be a lot of financial pressure on a town where that boat is likely outside town more than it's inside of town. I'm not saying we don't need a boat. Totally agree we need a boat, but the question is, do we need a seventy thousand dollar boat so that we can be first on site to other communities because they have a smaller boat?
Did we hear, Councilor Thorburn, you say we have an agreement?
Mutual.
Is it a verbal agreement or a?
Mutual. A mutually agreement?
Mutually agreement, and that's included in that?
Well, your firefighting equipment, so, yeah.
Like the trucks.
Your pumbers, those.
This is more for rescuers.
Well, if, if Bridgewater gets paged out for a water rescue, Northfield and Dayspring also get paged out, and vice versa.
Councilor Graves, we are on budget.
Yeah, I was just going to mention that council approved the capital item, and, and when we go to tender, it's, it's fairly contractual. You would be able to not award if it were exceeded budget or didn't meet specifications or that type of thing.
I guess for me, I, like, I, yes, I understand it's on budget. And in my head, it was like, well, if we're going to buy a fifty thousand dollar boat, I know what a fifty thousand dollar boat is. This is a seventy thousand dollar boat. I know it's on budget for us. But it's not really on budget. Like, let's call it what it is, seventy thousand dollar boat, it's twenty thousand dollars over budget. But the money's coming to make up the shortfall for the taxpayer.
That's not really a hundred percent factual, because a lot of that money's for equipment for on the boat. It's got nothing to do with the boat itself. If you look deep into it, with the radios and whatnot, the TMRs and.
Yeah, I.
It's equipment.
I look at the dollar. I look at, I was prepared to, what was it, fifty-eight thousand? Is that what the budget was for the boat?
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight, forty-eight thousand. So it's forty-eight thousand, it's now seventy-one thousand dollars, or sixty-nine thousand dollars.
Technically, your budget was forty-eight. It's higher than your budget.
So we're over budget and we're, anyway, like, I understand the, the process, the legal process. We award the tender, and again, for us, I know we're not earning any money as the, as council, as the town. But it's just.
What, they're great questions. There's no question about it, but they're at the wrong time. We should have done that or had this debate when we approved the capital expenditure and say, do we need to spend as much money?
The only thing I would say is that you set your budget at forty-eight thousand. Clearly, it's over that. There wasn't any revenue put in for additional funds to come from the fire department or the police department. So we, if you're not comfortable making the decision tonight, we can defer and get legal advice to see if, if the amount we put in at forty-eight, even though we've got additional contributions after the fact, that's sufficient enough to not award. If you, if you're not comfortable, you could do that, and I could get legal advice from our solicitor about that. Then we, we'd look at award in August and we have to hope that the prices were held for, usually they're thirty to sixty, sixty days or so.
Right, because we're ten, we're ten grand over budget. Plus, plus, plus. So we're ten grand over our budget and we're.
You're getting contributions from the fire department and the police department to make up the difference. If that wasn't in your budget, there's no revenue in the budget.
Over the original budget.
Yeah, are we, and I guess this is a question to Councilor Thorburn, are we the go-to boat in Lumber County? Or if, if something happens down river, wherever, is the RCP?
The go-to boat in, in Lumber County is in the town of Lumber, where they have to have a pilot's license. It's a big enough boat. Our boat and our license is, is based on the size of that boat. If it was any bigger than, we'd have to take a pilot's course and, and get certified for it. This is as big as we can go with that boat, so.
My question is, does the RCP have a boat that patrols?
Does all of that?
They do, and, and Lumber has.
But if there's an accident or whatever, it's called for?
Lumber would be called before us.
But would the RCP be called?
If it was outside the town, it would be.
It's a little late for us to have this discussion. I agree. It, it was passed in the budget, approved the budget, and designed to go, so I will support it reluctantly. But it's, it's a game. We're paying for something for others, and I don't think we're getting the deal that we thought we might get today.
Well, and, and I'll just say that, again, I, I recognize that this is kind of, this is when the tender comes, we have this discussion, and it seems a little bit weird in terms of the timing or a little bit, you know, it's inconvenient. But the budget was forty-eight thousand. That's what we approved around this table. This is fifty-eight thousand plus eleven thousand dollars worth of options. It's twenty thousand dollars over the budget that we approved. And I know that we're not going to be out more money around this table, but it's, I just keep looking at it going, it's twenty thousand dollars more boat. Or ten thousand dollars more boat, or ten thousand dollars more options. And this is, this has nothing to do with the, our volunteer fire service, or it's not, it's not a, I'm not having this debate because I don't trust the fire service, so I don't want that to be misunderstood. I'm just looking at, when I, when I voted for the budget, I voted for one of these items, forty-eight thousand dollar boat. And we're getting a seventy thousand dollar boat. So to Councilor McGinnis's point, I'd like to know that, you know, if, if ours is the go-to boat, if there's a, if there's a sailboat that's in distress down at the La Havre River Yacht Club, then is it our boat that goes down first, or is it our boat that goes down second, third, last? Does it not go down that river, whatever that is, ten kilometers? Who goes, if there's a boat in distress, ten kilometers outside of town?
The three departments would be paged out, as per the mutual aid agreement. Day, uh, Dayspring would launch from Snyder Shipyard. We would probably launch from Shipyard's Landing, then we go down the river. Same, we've done some water rescues in, in the wintertime. The last rescue that I was involved in down there, actually, Dayspring got there ahead of us, so.
But they have a smaller boat?
A little bit smaller, yeah.
Oh, a little bit smaller, not that much.
Not, not a lot smaller.
So is this, is this price, I see it's coming from Europe, is this price locked in regardless of currency fluctuations and so on? Given we're not taking delivery till twenty twenty?
There's usually a period of time in which the price has to be guaranteed. We don't have the tender document rate here to say what that, what that time period is.
It's usually good for so many days.
Usually it's thirty to sixty days, depending on the tender, so I'm not too sure what's in this one. So I'm not too sure what's in this one.
But if the price were to go, the currency rate would go down, then you would save money, but it's probably, it could go up.
It will go up higher.
Yeah.
Counsel McDonald.
I think that this question is an interesting one to ask for a number of projects. If there's a set budget and you can fundraise to add to it, is that acceptable? Or do we have to stick to that budget before going to RFP? So I, I don't think it's just a question for this particular purchase. I think overall, I'd like to know the answer to that and how it impacts different projects and purchases.
Yeah, nor, normally, it's just us budgeting for an item and, and using our revenue to buy that. Because this came in over budget, the fire department offered to fund the shortfall essentially. And the police department, well, Scott offered part, five thousand from the police budget to offset that overage. But that's not what counsel approved in, in your budget, right? You approved $48,000 for a boat.
And while we do not approve the line items in the police budget, that police budget is our money.
That's true.
So that $5,000 is our...
It has to be reallocated.
Fire department, they fundraised, that's free and clear for them, but... So do we, do we know where the $5,000 from the police is coming from?
Scott has some savings and his, and his budget insurance was one area.
Yes, he did.
Yeah, that, so there's no concern about making that $5,000?
For me, for, for me, I'll just speak for me. At the end of the day, for us, it comes, comes in under budget for what we approved. So I don't know how we, I don't know how I can vote against it because we approved that amount, the budget. I'm just, I guess I need to just say that I'm, I'm not a really happy camper over how this got inflated and then it, it gets made to seem like it's okay because you don't have to pay more. But somebody's paying more. So whether it's this, or to Counsel McDonald's point, or something else, to me, I think it should be, if the budget is this and you're gonna go way over the budget, it's not, to me, it's not okay just to come back and say, well, we found this money here, there. Whether it's police, the fire, any other department, if you're over budget, you're over budget and need to come back. Slate needs to be wiped clean and we need to start again. Because maybe the answer is we need a $70,000 boat. And if that's the answer, then come and pitch your case for a $70,000 boat, just like the chief would for a million dollar fire truck. And he did, and he made the case for a million dollar fire truck, and we said, we signed on for that truck. But if he came back and said, I have a 1.5 million dollar fire truck I need, we would have started again. So I don't wanna pick on the chief because he's just a great guy.
I'll just make two more comments and make it short. Actually, the hull had a leak in that boat a few months ago. We had to spend a few dollars to repair it and fix it up. So the boat that they have now, I don't know how much longer it's gonna last for the safety of the minute that goes on it. And I will support this because the price might have went up a little bit, or maybe a lot, depending on where your perspective is. But it seems like that's, was the intent of that boat, not the price that was required to do the job. So I will support that motion. As a matter of fact, I'll put the motion on the floor if need be.
I just, Counsel Frasier just wanted to, she had to comment first, sorry.
I guess back to our CEO's point of the legalities of if we can approve outside the budget with regards to the fundraising and that, and it's over council's original approved budget of $48,000. I'm just wondering, is this time-sensitive motion that we have to make a decision tonight? Or is it beneficial to go back for a legal opinion with regards to...
You, you could go. It really comes down to the question about, as the mayor said, you budget at forty-eight.
Yeah.
There's been funds provided to supplement that, so in terms of the impact on your budget, it's, it's gonna be the same, so counsel has to be comfortable with that. But if it's that you budget at forty-eight for a boat and it's over, regardless of if we have money to supplement that or not, you're not comfortable with that, you can have a, get a legal opinion and you can defer your decision until you get that. In terms of, we'd have to go back to the vendor and ask all vendors if they would hold the prices for another three weeks or four weeks until the August council meeting, which they probably will. But we'd have to ask that question and get the prices locked in until then, get the legal opinion and come back to council in August.
So if I understand correctly, you're, we're not gonna get shipping of this boat until January 2020, which is still winter, so February's technically still winter, March is still winter. So to me, we have perhaps a bit of playroom, so to speak, before the boat could even be utilized anyway.
It's probably just the amount of time to order it and, and have it prepared and shipped.
I mean, if we're adding three weeks to a decision, then, yeah, okay. I guess it depends on what, what counsel wants the outcome of that to be. If it's, if it's that, the, if it's too much boat, in counsel's opinion, or we want to talk to other departments about cost sharing or other municipalities. But if the end result is going to be back to a boat that is specced the same way, then we're back to a $69,000 boat. It doesn't change the outcome.
No.
So I guess that's the question. Is it, if counsel feels this is, and that's where I was kinda, maybe I didn't articulate it well. That's where I was, I don't know that this is too much boat. I just know it's a lot more money. But I, I don't, I'm not in a position to question the, the chief and his validity and, and his knowledge on how to build and spec out a boat any more than I was with a fire truck. That's, at some point, we have to have that trust in our, in our chief and his staff, and I do. I guess for me, it was the sticker shock. And so going back to your point or your question, Deputy Mayor, it depends. If we're going, if we can defer this to the next council meeting, get a legal opinion, but if the end result is that counsel still wants this particular boat, then we're just, we're just right back where we were versus asking the fire department to spec out a boat that does not exceed $48,000.
I guess over the past number of years, Chief Nos has never overasked anything. He's always asked things, for things that are reasonable, and, and maybe in this particular case, this is a reasonable ask. So I'm prepared to, to go for it based on that. He's frugal at times. He can be frugal at times, and I think he's sensible at times, so... And I think for those reasons, if he feels he needs a boat like this, then he probably does.
Counsel Thorburn. Just, just one last thing. The fire department has, since 2008, had a 10-year plan and then a longer plan for stuff in the future. And when we put those numbers in there, we try and inflate them two or three percent a year. So when the time comes, the money that you propose for is what it's gonna cost. And we've had a pretty good record. Now, we've brought in loaders and dump trucks and stuff that's been way over budget. And this is a little bit over, that they're gonna pay. It must be the boat that they wanted, or they wouldn't have put in the budget 10 years ago. I will support that budget because I, I think that's what they want. I think it's necessary, and that's it.
Counsel McGinnis?
For me, I really think they probably need the boat. My question is, who pays what for the boat? That's the whole issue I have. Boat is probably required. I have no problem with that. But I have a problem with, as you say, we don't have a large body of water in the town of Bridgewater. So this boat is primarily designed for probably out-of-town use.
No. It's provided, it's designed for a quick rescue. And the police use it, anytime there's a function on the waterway, that boat is on the water with the volunteers. Canada Day, Christmas on La Haye, whenever there's a function, that boat's asked for.
If you were fresh here, you scribed, there's two motions there. Someone can put a motion on the floor to defer if you have more questions. Or someone can put a motion on the floor to either purchase or not purchase the boat. Counsel Thorburn.
I would move that Town Council of the Town of Bridgewater award RFP 2019-05 with additional funds provided by the fire department and the police department. Oh, I lost my screen. Time to... Doctor Bit 10-093 to New Star Marine and Scooter Incorporated for supply of one new professional series Bridget inflatable rescue boat, including option 2, 4, 5, 6, 8, 9, and 16, and one unnumbered item as proposed in our RFP submission for a total price of $78,000. $297.75, including HST, $71,003.12 net HST.
Seconded by Counsel Graves. We've had a fairly robust discussion. For us, it does come in, come in on budget for, with our documents.
Question?
Questions being called. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion's carried. Thank you. Perhaps we should, at a future date, have a discussion around council table in terms of budgets and the appropriateness, whether it's right or wrong, I don't know, we should have that discussion, on using funds from other sources to offset an overage. Because Counsel Thorburn's right, we have other items that come in that are over budget, and we, we either approve or in some cases, we don't. And, and this one, Chief Nos has, I mean, he always, if one thing's over, he always removes something else, right? Just like if something breaks, they tend to remove something else and replace what broke so that they don't change their budget. So I, you know, hats off to them for that. But, but what I'd hate to see is a group using funds that they fundraised for, for item A, for item B, and then we find out later, we now need to help them with item A because it's now broken, but they've used their fundraising money for something else. So just, I think we should add that to a future agenda at some point. To, to Counsel McGinnis's point, is, would it be possible to get a report from the chief? Maybe a two- or three-year historical, historical report as to how many times this boat has been used and where it's been used? Just so we can get an idea of how it's, how it's utilized?
Yep.
Be helpful for us.
Yeah. They, they record every call, so... Actually, Jennifer got liaison between the chief. She is a new liaison now, not me, so...
Yeah, we could do that.
And get that in front, perfect.
All right. That was great. I like a good, respectful discussion and debate. That was good. It's important to get that. All right, next item, Campaign to Protect Offshore Nova Scotia. Offshore drilling requests for a resolution of council. So as we know, we had, at our last meeting, we had a delegation asking us to look at the risks of offshore drilling. And so we told them that we would bring this back to a future council date, so welcome to that time. So we can make this motion today. If you have more questions or you need more information, we can gather more information, respecting that if you need something from staff, that staff have to then stop doing something to do that. But if you need more information, it's important that before council makes any resolution, you have all the information that you need, so you could defer this if you need to.
And the resolution was provided by C. Nos.
Right. They provided their own resolution, so... What is the wish of council?
I, I fully support, you know, a public inquiry into the pros and cons of oil exploration off our shores. And I understand that, you know, there are tremendous risks associated with that and so on. But I'm a little uncomfortable with making a, a motion that asks for moratorium on these kinds of explorations, only because I don't know the other side of the story. I don't know, I haven't, we've only heard from one group. That one group has certainly scared me quite considerably. But at the same time, there's, there's always two sides to every story. So I wouldn't mind understanding, you know, what would be involved in a moratorium on this if we were requested and what the impacts of that might be as well, so...
Okay. Counsel McDonald?
I also feel that there's a lot that I don't understand here, and I've, I've been trying to do some research and reaching out to people, and it's gonna take more time to get responses than I've currently had. I would like a little more time to do, do my due diligence and understand fully.
Would counsel like to then just move this to perhaps the September agenda? Giving us another month to gather some information? Okay, sent?
Yeah, my, my biggest concern, and I, I don't totally object to that, this motion that they've made. Decisions in this province are made primarily because of money. You know, they're not made for the environment. The province is in such dire straits, sometimes we make decisions because it's gonna give us money, and we sacrifice the environment, and that concerns me. And so, yeah, I, I would like a little more time because it's, it's a, it's a big decision, and one we should not take lightly.
Can we have this moved to the, let's move this to September, if we can. First meeting in September, enough time? The second, second Monday in September?
That's great.
The second meeting, okay. Okay, move that to the second meeting in September. And to Counsel McGinnis's point, I think that if after that, we make this resolution, it shows that we made this with all the information at hand, and we did it because it was that much more important to us to make sure we made the right decision. So I think it does lend a stronger voice to that if that's...
Can we get a list of the other municipal units that have already issued this?
C. Nos actually indicated that they would be providing that, but we have not received it.
It'd be nice to see that list as well.
Yeah, yeah, fair enough. Okay, so we'll move that to September.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Second and final reading, Chapter 22, Public Sewers. Oh, sorry, Counsel McDonald.
I know Counsel Tanner mentioned it, or sorry, Deputy Mayor Tanner mentioned it. But can we ask staff to help us to understand what a moratorium would involve and include? Just, you know, even if it's an email to, to kinda give us some information?
Here.
Thank you.
No, no problem.
And go.
All right. Second and final reading, Chapter 24, Public Sewer Bylaw. So I don't know if, sorry, Director Finan is gonna speak to that? We, this is the second and final reading, so we've kinda gone through this.
Yeah. Just as a reminder, I guess, that the town has had legal advice that, that we had taken the sewer rates out of the bylaw and put them in the fees policy. And the legal advice we've received said that, that the sewer bylaw should clearly indicate how the rates are being calculated and that they should be moved or approved by council motion instead of just sitting in the fees policy. So the change here is to add some language around how the rates will be calculated. And then subsequent reports will set the sewer rates.
Okay. Discussion members of council, about anything here?
If you have a strike forward, you'd like to motion?
Yes, please, then.
I move the Town Council of the Town of Bridgewater approve the second reading of the amended Chapter 24 Public Sewers Bylaw as presented in Document 18-060C, adopt as bylaw, and authorize staff to publish all public notices pursuant to Section 168 of the Municipal Government Act.
Thank you. Can I have a second here, please? Deputy Mayor Tanner, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion's carried. Next item is Policy 89.
So this is phase, step two of the process. The, the sewer rates are now in the fees policy, so this motion will remove the, the rates from the fees policy. And since we were coming with the fees policy, there were a couple of requests here to change the unit costs for curb cuts and to add a rental fee for the vacuum truck and driver.
Okay, thank you. So I'm prepared to make a motion. Counsel Frasier?
Yes, the Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater approved the revised Policy 89, fees as presented in Document 18-060E, as Policy 89 for the town, effective immediately.
Seconded by...
I'll, I'll second it, but I have a question.
Yes, seconded by Counsel McGinnis.
Yeah, when I read that, it, for the curb cuts, I think they said $350. I couldn't find it here, but I think it was $350 for a curb cut. Is that $350 a foot or is it $350 for a curb?
I think there's a mobilization cost, and then there's a per-foot cost. Just a minute here, we should see it.
Unless something's changed, that's how we do it. We have a setup fee, and then we have, if you want 10 feet cut, then it's a 10-foot measurement times a factor.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay.
And I, I can just look right here quickly and just see what...
Okay, so yeah, I think it is feet.
Seventy-five dollars.
Yeah, there's a mobilization cost of $165, and then the unit cost on that is supposed to move from 55 to 70.
Does that answer your question?
Yep.
Great, thank you. We have a mover and a seconder. Any further discussion? Question being called. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion's carried. The next item is 2019, 2020 sewer rates. Now, I had a question about this, because this came up today. I spoke to someone who has a relative who has a home-based business, and... and 20% of their square footage of their home is assessed as commercial, which is correct, because 20% of their home is used for commercial. That person sees one client per week. Because that 20% of their home was declared commercial, they are charged the commercial sewer rate for their entire property. Of whatever that is, $746, even though this single person who sees one client a week probably uses less infrastructure than many of us. I just wonder, is that?
We, we've had some complaints like that, and we don't really have a mechanism the way the policies are structured now to kind of make an assessment of, you know, how much, like, you know, because it depends on, you know, what kind of clients and how many clients, and to try and kind of figure that all out. What we did feel is that we are moving towards a sewer rate that's based on water consumption, and that should solve that problem, because if they're not using it a lot, then, you know, it wouldn't have anything to do with commercial versus residential. It's based on how much water you use.
But we have a, we have a commercial.
But now, with the current rate structure, there's not a lot that we can do about that unless we were to try and put in some sort of.
You'd have to come up with a more complex rate scheme that differentiated between different types of commercial uses. One might flush a toilet once every five hours, and one might have the daycare where the little kids are flushing the toilet every 20 minutes, right? So, the load would vary based on the type of commercial use, and right now, we don't control that so much as to say, "commercial." So, you'd have to come up with a much more different scheme.
Different rate, a different rate structure that would allow you and give you some guidance around how you make those judgments. But that is how we do it right now. Once PBSC says this person has a business in their home and they're assessed partly commercial, they get a commercial sewer rate.
Okay, this individual is going to close her business, so, because she can't, between the commercial rate and the commercial charge and.
Yeah, and we're really hopeful that the sewer rate study will be completed soon so that we can start to move towards the water-based, which will resolve that issue. If people aren't flushing the toilet a lot, they won't have the water coming into their property.
Okay. Just wanted to raise that. Counsel McInnes?
I have a bigger fish to fry.
Oh.
For residents and businesses outside of the Town of Bridgewater, they're paying the same sewer rate as residents of the town. I don't think that should be. I think there should be a 10% premium at least.
In terms of all, we charge the residents in the District of Lunenburg?
Yes.
Yeah, the rates are exactly the same as last year, except for a 15% increase. And the only distinction between the two is that, if you notice, like, commercial in the, in town has certain amount for the first user and then a smaller amount for each additional user. We don't have that benefit in the municipality of Lunenburg, but other than that, you're quite right, they're exactly the same. And we hadn't received any different direction from council, so we just moved based on what we had done last year. And again, we've got new rate structure coming that potentially could address that.
You want to keep going?
Well, I want, I think there should be a 10% premium for businesses outside of town. I don't want to get any support for this, but I'm. That's where I'm at, and if the rates changes later on, that's wonderful, but this motion should reflect that it should be a 10% premium.
Okay, Counsel Thorburn?
Yeah, I'd like to know how many households or how many businesses outside of town are on our sewer system.
We can get that number for you.
Yeah, it would be nice to know, because the last place, then you build outside of town again, another host of, and then it goes, extends, and we're way outside of our boundary now. Serves a lot of properties. And I agree with McInnes.
Okay, thank you. Counsel McDonald?
I know that we've discussed this in the past, and I thought that it was, it was direction for our new rate structure, that there would be an increased amount for anything outside of the Town of Bridgewater?
I think that was to bring that, because they were paying less, were they not?
Yeah, the last discussion we had about this, they, MODA was actually paying less than the Town of Bridgewater. So, where we landed was that we brought them to be on the same, same rates as the town, except for this whole additional user thing. And I just need to point out, though, that, that we are getting tight for rates for final tax bills. Normally, this would come, because of the change we've gone through with the bylaw and all that, it's delayed quite a bit. Normally, this motion would come with the, or in the future, it will come with the budget motion. So, you know, if we want to defer till the 12th, we could do that, August the 12th, but that would be the very latest that we could.
So, not this year next? So, not this year next?
Yeah, just one more comment if I may. For years, the residents of the town have been subsidizing the sewer rates. We're only now getting cost recovery.
We're still not getting.
And we're still not. So, that even makes it worse.
But to, for your statement, yes, we've been subsidizing their lower rate, and only now are they paying what we are paying, so not cost recovery, but only now are we on par. But for years, they were paying less.
And plus, Bill's right, the town is subsidizing a piece of that. So, they're subsidizing the whole system, so they're subsidizing inside and outside.
Yeah, the capital is a big part of that, yes.
Deputy Mayor Tanner? Don, can you explain this additional, each additional user concept to me? I don't quite.
It would be, I guess, a shopping center or something like that, or hospital is a good one. Like, they charge a base charge of $746 and then $49 for each additional bed. And commercial, yeah, an apartment building would be one, where, you know, there'd be a flat fee and then, you know, the base charge, and then, and a smaller amount for additional units.
So, oh, so an additional user would be an additional apartment unit within a?
Yeah, or, or in a hotel, an additional room.
And, okay. And just, out of curiosity, does someone go count the number of rooms in the apartment? Really?
Well, I, I think that they kind of, they have their base that they work from, and I know that Nancy goes out each time and kind of looks around, looks, takes a drive through town and, you know, checks out what's been added, and I think they get information from Graham too, about what's, what's out there.
So, Counsel McInnes has raised the concern and the point of having a change to reflect a higher rate, so that the residents and taxpayers of the Town of Bridgewater are not subsidizing those outside as we have. So, I'd hate to do this on the fly to our Director of Finance. So, I just want to, perhaps we'll go around, if, if the desire is to change that so that it better reflects that we have been subsidizing, we still are subsidizing it, and we no longer want to do that, I would ask that probably we move this to the August 12th council meeting, but that we let our Director of Finance know what the intention is in terms of that increase, so that she knows what to prepare the documents for. Just respecting the time crunch. Counsel McInnes, and then Counsel Graves.
Well, if I may, we could settle this rate this evening. If we, if we just say residents and commercial entities outside the Town of Bridgewater pay 10% premium.
Yeah, you could maybe a 10% administrative fee.
It's not going to answer the question about, is that still going to bring you to the level where the town's not subsidizing that?
We're never going to get that.
Do we get it through this year? So, you're saying, Counsel Graves?
So, why 10%? Why not 7% or 17% or 27%? It's just a number at this point. It'd be nice to have some science behind it, perhaps?
I don't think that the science behind it would get you to a place where you could, you know? Set a rate.
Counsel McDonald?
Before we start adding a premium, I'd like to at least get to cost recovery for any, the accounts outside of the Town of Bridgewater. Do we have an idea of how far out we are on that study?
Oh, oh, the study?
The water, the consumption study, the rate study?
Yeah, because that will cover those, those accounts as well, right?
Yes, I, I know that I sent information to the consultants here a month or two ago, so I'm, I'm guessing that in the fall, the.
Yeah, September-ish, I think.
Well, don't forget, we're going to reset these rates in the, in the next budget, too. So, if you do your 10% premium or whatever that number is, then it's not a year from now that we're resetting the rates, right? Like, we're going to have this discussion again come March.
Yeah, and the rates, like, the 15% a year has kind of been in recognition that we're nowhere near cost recovery, and we just keep increasing as we approach. So, we've reached a point now where we're cost recovery on the operating costs and are tucking some money in reserve, but we're not funding depreciation yet, which is the big, the big piece that'll help us start to be able to use it to fund our capital, and in a similar way as, as the PSC does it.
Deputy Mayor Tanner, you had a question?
No, Counsel McDonald answered it, asked it just with regard to the timing of the study, so.
What's your wish? Do you want to?
I guess, what was the last increase? I know they were playing below the town, town rate.
Yeah, I, I, the last one just brought them up to par, but I'm not sure what they were paying for. I don't remember that.
Okay, just curious.
I was going to ask that, too, and then my head kind of went, it doesn't really matter because we've been, they should be, they should have always been. So, I'm just going to keep going back to you, Counsel McInnes, because you started this discussion.
I say we could set, we're never, we're never going to get to the point where we're going to get cost recovery anytime soon.
Not, not this year.
So, I just think if a business locates outside of town, the residents in town are subsidizing sewer rates, have been for years, and they're not. So, they should be paying a premium on these rates, my point of view. And whether that's 10%, 15%, I, as I say, you're never going to get the cost recovery. I threw 10% on the floor, we can go 15%, whatever the case might be. But I think we can make that decision this evening.
So, would you add at the very end of this motion something to the effect of 10% will be added to all of these rates for any entity or residents outside of town? Could it be that? Is that simple as?
There is a whole section on just the municipality's rates. Sandra, I'm going to look at you to kind of.
The owner of every house, shop, or other property within the municipality District of Lunenburg connected to the sewage collection system in Hebbville shall pay the town a charge or rate to use the sewage system as follows. Residents in land lease communities per unit, $351, $35, and then the commercial rate. So, it could just.
Plus 10%.
Or you could.
But there's only two rates there.
We can do.
Yeah, there's only two.
Yeah, so we could just do the math.
Plus 10%?
Yeah.
And Counsel Thorburn would like to make that motion?
I'll make the motion.
Oh, wait, Deputy Mayor Tanner, a question?
There's three rates, is there not, with the 439, 10 for each additional user?
I think that's in the town rates.
But why wouldn't that apply to the municipality as well?
Well, that's the kind of little, because they pay the same. They don't pay the 439, they pay the 746 for each additional unit. So, there's no reduction for the additional units.
Ah, I'm with you, okay, sorry. I understood now, okay.
So, 386, 386, 48 for the residents?
Let the CAO do the math.
Oh, no.
Maybe I'll check it.
Yeah, you, you, yeah, you be the checker. 386, 48.
I was going to let the banker do the math. Counsel Graves?
I don't have my two screens here.
Thirty dollars.
So, what happens if we have a homeowner or a business in Hebbville currently or Wildville that wants to connect to the system? Is there a process for that?
For them to connect to our system?
Yeah, so you're, you're a business or a homeowner?
Along an existing system.
Along the existing system.
There'd be a connection application that would have to be made through, it would probably start at the District of Lunenburg, and they would get referred here for sewer connection application.
And the sewer connections would be the same price as the Town of Bridgewater?
I don't know what are.
This is, and should that not connect to that as well?
It goes to MODA, it doesn't touch us at all?
Their line?
Yeah, it's our system, yeah.
So, if they wanted to, they could, they could add a whole subdivision connected to the sewer, provided there was capacity, and there's nothing you can do about it? Is that how I get it? That's what you said?
If there's capacity.
Yeah. Should be something we looked at as well. I was wondering, I certainly don't have a problem increasing the rates, but I think the whole thing should be looked at as well. We certainly don't want to subsidize people outside the Town of Bridgewater and allow them to have a lower tax rate, and at the same time subsidizing them for sewer and water doesn't make any sense, right? But if they can, if they can right now, just, or just hook up, they want to hook up. They want to build a property, and Wildville is an example, and I, to the best of my knowledge, if we do extend in the Wildville or Hebbville, then they could just do it.
But they wouldn't be able just to hook to our system without our approval, right? Because we do have capacity issues. Do we have a mechanism in place?
Right now, I think that they're allowed just to connect, and, and their fees that they pay out there are very expensive. We just don't get it.
Okay, so that, that just raises a whole bunch of red flags for me, because we have times where we have to tell people, you can't develop here, you have to develop over here, you can't go here, you have to go there, because we have capacity issues. So, to me, there absolutely needs to be a mechanism in place where we get the final say on who connects to a system that goes to our treatment plant. So, that, that, to me, that's like a, August 12th, there should be a motion that says there can be no connections outside of town to the Town of Bridgewater's wastewater system without approval of staff, making sure that we have capacity.
So, maybe what staff need to do then is look to see what agreements are in place between the District of Lunenburg and the town, with respect to that. You can't imagine it being carte blanche, like, when you, when you did it, but they do own the pipes. The distribution or collection system is theirs, but it connects to the town. So, there should be an agreement in place when that connection was made that would put some parameters around that, but perhaps we could get that information and bring that back for the August meeting or discussion session if you want.
Glad you asked that question. That's, I'm nervous now. I don't like that. I don't like that answer.
I thought this was going to be easy.
Like, I'm almost at the point where I'm waiting for someone to make a motion that says there can be no further hookups to the Town of Bridgewater's wastewater treatment plant from outside the Town of Bridgewater until we have sorted out some kind of.
And it was a really long time ago, I think, that those agreements were.
Yeah, we've gone since then.
Okay, so we're going to find out all the other areas that are outside the town? Of all the places that are accessing our sewer system?
Yeah, that are connected to ours.
And I'm sure engineering has all that information for the sewer rate study, because I know that they're looking at all of that.
Okay, if you want to refresh your screen, the new rates have been added in there for outside town bottom. To me, this seems like a bit of a rush, can, like, not this part, I mean, the, the who can hook up. Can we?
We'll get them.
Yeah, can we have that for the next meeting?
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, it's, it's, the information exists, we just got to get it.
Yeah, but that's, that's a scary one, because we have capacity issues, so we have to make sure, not that the ramp in development outside of town, and if it's at exit 12, it goes to their own treatment plant, but that one's.
And I might add, our sewer rates are the best bargain in town. I mean, it is a real bargain.
Just further to that, the wording of this motion says Hebbville, but Counsel Graves says we go to Wildville and we get feeds from Wildville?
I, I don't know, I'm not, I don't. There may be something.
Just water for the Victoria Ridge or something.
Yeah, and they have their own sewage treatment system there, Victoria Ridge.
Counsel Thorburn, you've been encouraged to make the motion.
Am I?
It's because you think it's like a proclamation where he likes to read those laws.
He does, he likes those.
Yeah, okay.
I, I would move that Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater approve the sewer rates for 2019, '20 as follows. Charges for connection to the public sewer, the owner of every property fronting on any street in which there's a public sewer, and which has been or may hereafter be connected to the public sewer by a building drain from said host, shall pay the town. One, where there is an existing dwelling on the property, for one connection, $300. For each additional connection, $125. Asterisk, if stormwater connection is done at the same time as a sanitary water connection. Two, where there is no existing dwelling on the property, for one connection, $600. For each additional connection, $350. Asterisk, if stormwater connection is done at the same time as a sanitary sewer connection. Additional sewer charges, the owner of every house, shop, or other property within the Town of Bridgewater connected with the public sewer of the Town of Bridgewater shall pay the town for each property owned by him, her, shall pay the town for each property owned by him, her, a rate, a charge or rate for use of the sewage system as follows. Residents in land lease communities, one dwelling unit, three hundred and fifty-one thirty-five, plus one fifty-three ninety-five for each additional dwelling unit. Hotels and motels, base charge seven forty-six twenty-five, plus forty-nine thirty-five for each guest unit. Hospitals, basic charge seven forty-six twenty-five, plus forty-nine thirty-five for each patient bed. Other commercials, shopping centers, industrial and institutional users, for the first user, seven forty-six twenty-five, plus four thirty-nine ten for each additional uni, user. The owner of every house, shop, or other property within the municipality district of Lunenburg connected to the sewage collection system in Hebbville shall pay the town a charge or rate of use of the sewage system as follows. Resident and land lease communities, per unit, three fifty-one thirty-five.
Now, you had to refresh your screen.
I refreshed it, but it didn't come up. Where's yours?
Three eighty-six forty-eight?
Unit six forty-eight, is it?
Three eighty-six forty-eight.
Three eighty-six forty-eight? Yeah. And commercials, shopping centers, institutional other institu, users?
At eight twenty-eighty-eight.
Yeah. Eight twenty-eighty-eight.
Are you seconding that? Can I have a second here, please? Council McGinnis.
Can I ask another clarification question?
Yeah.
Bonavista Drive and Conquerall Bank, where does that feed?
Are they, are they on a, are they well in septic?
I don't know.
They're well in septic.
Well in septic, okay.
Thank you. Just clarify, Deputy Mayor Tanner's going to be driving around the outskirts of town.
That's Meadowbrook, right?
Yes.
Meadowbrook, yeah.
Did you watch for the, watch for Deputy Mayor Tanner circling around, knocking on your door? Council Graves?
Flush your toilet, please.
So, just under M O D L, I'm still not clear on the commercial shopping centers, institutions, and industrial units. I get the extra price, but it's the additional users. I don't under, I...
They don't, they don't get that. They pay the same for all of the users.
Right, so in the town, you build a, you build a hotel.
Yeah.
And every room you put in, that's, that's how I understand it.
Yeah.
It's, it's an extra charge. So, the institutional, sorry, one second.
So, there's no reduced additional charge?
Other commercial centers, institution, so what exactly is an example of that?
So, in the District of Lunenburg?
No, in town. So, somebody, so you're a commercial shopping center.
Like the mall that would have...
Ten tenants.
Yeah.
So, and then all of a sudden, they do an addition.
Yeah.
So, that addition is being charged four hundred and thirty-nine dollars. But if you're in M O D L...
Then they don't get the discount. They're paying the twenty.
They pay the full price. It's per unit, yeah, per unit.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, two hundred and twenty.
Okay. Question?
Yep, that, Deputy Mayor Tanner asked the same question.
I know you did.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I don't think it was ever...
So, now we're definitely sure.
Okay.
Yeah, so they don't get the discount.
Any questions?
Question being called. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. And we will get some information on...
Sewer.
Sewer, yeah. Revisions to Policy ninety-four hospitality. So, this is the one that we talked about last week.
Yeah, you gave notice that at this meeting you would be considering the approval of revisions to Policy ninety-four hospitality policy. That will provide guidance with respects to what is considered a hospitality expense. Set out the process to ensure accountability in terms of making claims, make it clear what is eligible as a hospitality expense. It sets out signing authorities as well to ensure that there's proper protocols and procedures in place for that.
Deputy Mayor Tanner?
I believe the Town Council for the town of Bridgewater approved the revised hospitality policy as presented in document nineteen dash zero seven nine, revised as Policy ninety-four for the town effective immediately.
Thank you. Seconded by Council Frasier. Any further discussion?
Question?
Question being called. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. Uh, next item is Girl Guide Cabin Grant Transfer from Operating Reserves. So, as we know, Girl Guide Cabin was sold and we agreed that the proceeds from that sale would go to Girl Guides.
Right, so the, this, this motion is suggesting that we would, that council would approve a grant to the Girl Guides for the net proceeds of the sale. And it's a little more complicated because the, the government act requires that any proceeds on the sale of property have to go to the Capital Reserve. And you can't really, well, you can't pay a grant out of the Capital Reserve. So, the grant would have to go as a grant to organizations through the operating fund. So, we're suggesting that, so that the proceeds are gone into the Capital Reserves, we approve a grant in the operating fund and fund it from the operating reserve fund, so that it doesn't impact the surplus deficit in the operating fund.
Okay. Someone prepared to make a motion? Is it Council Frasier?
Yes, the Town Council for the town of Bridgewater endorsed the recommendation of staff and approve a grant to the Girl Guides of Canada in the amount of eighty-four thousand forty-two dollars and fourteen cents, and a transfer for the undesignated reserve to the operating fund in the amount of eighty-four thousand forty-two dollars and fourteen cents to provide funding for the grant.
Thank you. Seconded by Council McDonald. Any discussion?
Question on that. What does the law, does the law give any percentage of the eighty-four thousand that goes to Girl Guides Canada?
Yeah, they committed that they were getting twenty...
Twenty, twenty-five, something like that.
Yeah, twenty, I thought it was twenty percent, but between twenty and twenty-five percent.
Okay.
But they had committed that they would get...
I knew they got some, but I didn't know how much.
Yeah.
Okay. Question?
Questions being called. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Uh, next item is report options for former Bridgewater Memorial Arena. We had a, a good presentation at our discussion session last week.
I'll wait till the motion's made.
And, um, so what is the wish of, of council? Council McDonald?
Move the Town Council for the town of Bridgewater, oh, sorry, I'm on the wrong one. I refreshed, it all went away. Sorry, next.
So, really, we already had a motion to, to do a feasibility study. This is kind of to confirm the motion that we've already made as a council.
Two questions.
I'll log in while they're asking questions.
Let's, Council Graves, you want to put the words on the floor and then we can have a discussion?
The further council's motion nineteen dash zero five five approved on March twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen, Town Council directs staff to move forward with the feasibility study for the renovation and use of the former B M A to serve as a performing arts space, Bridgewater Transit Garage and Park Facility.
Can I have a second here, please? Deputy Mayor Tanner, you had a question?
A couple of questions. How much is the facility going to cost us?
So, you're here last, I think you missed last week, right?
No, I was here.
Oh, okay. Couldn't remember who was here.
I was missed.
Oh, it was Council Frasier that was.
It was a great, actually, a great presentation.
The study is, we have, I believe, it's seventy-five hundred that Jessica has included within the budget for this.
I thought it was six thousand, so seventy-five hundred, eh? Okay. Uh, this is going to be a regional facility, at least two parts. The, the former center and the farmer's market. And of that seventy-five hundred, I think we should have some help from other people in Lunenburg County.
So, would you like, would you like staff to approach the municipality?
Yes.
Would you like me to approach the municipality and request that, like, we've already made this motion to do this feasibility study, but there's nothing saying we can't go and ask for help, because you're not wrong.
No, well, my, my point is, if we pay a hundred percent for the feasibility study, we own the project. So, when we start, you know, if we start doing work, who is in, who's in this deal with us, or are we on our own again?
Well, certainly my takeaway from the presentation that we got was, there's a component that we're going to have to pay for, because we're putting parks and wreck and transit in there. And then I looked at it as, there's a component that the social players are going to have to fundraise for and pay for, and the, and the farmer's market. I never took that to be a eight hundred and something thousand dollar project that was going to come eight hundred thousand to us. To me, it was two hundred and something was, um, was our part if we wanted to do the whole thing. And the Director of Planning said, you have to do the whole thing, because if you don't, if you only do one or two, it changes the whole scope of it. But to me, it was, we're like two fifty or something like that. And it only works if the rest of them step up to play. And it's sixty-five hundred dollars, by the way, for the feasibility study.
There was also highlighted by staff at our meeting last, at the discussion session, that there is a COA has some funding that wouldn't be eligible for the town component for the park, the transit piece, but would be eligible for the performing arts and the, um, the farmer's market. And I can't, is it two hundred and some thousand potentially that we could, they could source funds from a COA for that could help offset some of their costs. But it doesn't cover the whole project cost, obviously, but it would lessen...
Well, there's two parts. There's, there's, there's the capital that's also operating, ongoing.
Yeah.
And so, are you suggesting, or are you suggesting that the performing arts group and the farmer's market are going to pay for those?
Those would be things that council would have to negotiate, yeah, with the user groups.
Oh, here comes Mr. Hurdle.
Permission to chime in?
Yes.
Just in terms of the feasibility study, that would be the operating costs and a three to five-year financing model on what those costs would look like and what potential revenue sources would be, would be included as part of the study. So, that would get some greater examination if the study goes forward. Council could chew on the results afterwards.
Does that help you?
You don't like paying full sixty-five hundred.
I'll give you a dollar, okay?
Council Thorburn, buy you a coffee?
Yeah.
There's, there's no specific mention in this motion about the farmer's market unless it's covered under Parks Facility, I guess. But does there need to be, or we're very clear that this is going to be including the research on the farmer's market piece as well, right?
It was, it was, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, that's correct. That's how it was presented to council, was that the market, or not specifically the Bridgewater farmer's market, because there could be multiple entities that could look at it. But yes, that would be a component.
Eric. Are there questions? Council McDonald?
You were saying that a feasibility study would typically include a funding model? And so, it would kind of break down what it, what is feasibly or reasonable for a nonprofit organization to fundraise and contribute, and what you would be looking for in grants and what you would be looking for from a municipality?
That's correct. It would be both the, the expenses that would be incurred from the day-to-day operations and also the potential revenue streams as well. So, that would include working with the nonprofits to ascertain what they're currently spending in their current facilities and what they could reasonably afford to pay to be part of this facility as well.
Thank you.
Are there questions?
I think I asked at that meeting about the seniors club room, how big that was and what that could be used for, because we talked earlier in the night about a place for seven people to go. But I'd be that building up there would be certainly big enough to hold seven people up next on the arena.
I think it's the timing is the issue. We need space for the, for the staff now for smart cities. And I think we're a few years away from...
Well, that, that's still up there. There's still, there's no use designated for that piece that was built onto the arena. They may be able to be reconfigured and they could use it fairly quickly. That's a fairly big unit. I never got the information, but it's fairly big.
We can, we can...
We can look into it.
I think they want a storefront presence downtown.
Oh, they want storefronts. They're not going to get that up there, but no. Place to set, yes.
Yeah, there's, there's a very public component to this smart city.
Nope, that's fine.
Just one more question. Is the sixty-five hundred dollars for this study included in the budget anywhere?
Yes, yeah, yeah. Council Frasier.
Just wondering the timeline to get back with the, have we got a couple of months for the feasibility study, or?
Uh, I don't know if those conversations have happened yet.
At a very high level, we're probably looking at the fall before that study comes back, you know?
Okay. Any other discussion? Council Thorburn?
If we follow this model, my numbers shows that the town will save, or residents will save one point two million, because we won't have to build a new facility for parks and wrecks and transit. So, it seems like a pretty good deal.
It was cheaper than one of the options we were given, for sure.
Yeah.
Can be a better deal.
Always be better, Joe.
Any others, anything else? All right, questions being called. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Uh, last item, new business, Bridgewater Business Industrial Park Infrastructure Funding. We talked about the announcement of those today. Someone prepared to make the first motion on that one. Deputy Mayor Tanner?
Remove the Town Council for the town of Bridgewater, approve a contribution of ninety thousand dollars towards the Bridgewater Business Industrial Park Reconfiguration Project.
I have a second here, please. Council Graves, discussion? Question being called. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Deputy Mayor, you'd like to make the next?
Uh, move the Town Council for the town of Bridgewater authorize the operating budget shortfall resulting from the contribution toward the Bridgewater Business Industrial Park Reconfiguration Project. Estimated at seventy thousand dollars be funded from the operating reserve.
Thank you. Seconded by Council Thorburn. Uh, discussion, none of those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Um, there are no other items to come before council? Like, to congratulate Council McGinnis on birth of a grandchild?
Seven.
Today? Was that today?
Eight ten this morning, seven pounds, six ounces. Wesley William McGinnis.
Walking the topic already, what?
Congratulations. And a happy birthday to our C A O, whenever that birthday is. It's sometime this week.
Twenty-nine, hold me.
Nope.
Thirty-two.
Pick an age. All right, is there something else? Motion to adjourn?
Some oath.
Council Thorburn, seconded by Deputy Mayor Tanner. We are adjourned. We have a super quick motion chair.
Thanks, Grant.